Okay, well, while you keep working on that, maybe we'll get started and maybe it'll be fixed by the time we get there. Welcome to the public meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners on January 3rd, 2019. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as I call this meeting to order. Do we have any public announcements? We should announce we have our new Commissioner with us, Commissioner Josh Slotnick, welcome aboard. We're excited to have you. So, any other public announcements? All right, is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? We have one agenda item today on Sawmill Gulch Road petition. Does anyone have comments on anything besides that? All righty then, our current claims list, claims received by the Commissioner's Office as of November 29th, 2018, to December 26th, 2018 totaled $5,942,370.89. If you're interested in what all that money was spent on, you can go to our portal and click on the claims and look at what all the claims were that came into the county. And with that, we are up to our one hearing for the day. And I will open the hearing with a staff report by Sam Scott.
So my name is James Wilson and I'm standing in for Sam for the Clerk and Recorder's Office. The Clerk and Recorder's Office has received a petition to establish a road. The road, a portion of Sawmill Gulch right-of-way that begins at the northwesterly end of Certificate of Survey 3862, continues through Sections 34 and 35 in Township 14, Range 19 West. The petition fee has been paid in full. Notice of hearing has been published twice in an approved newspaper. The petition has been signed by at least 10 freeholders of the road district and all affected landowners, as described by John's opinion, have been notified.
Anybody have any questions for him currently? All right, do the homeowners have a representative that they would like to have speak or give a presentation?
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Steve Grinnell and I'm one of the petitioners. My wife and I live on Russian Joe Road and we access our home using Sawmill Gulch Road. The petition that we and our neighborhood, our neighbors, I'm sorry, have filed requests that the Commission establish a portion of the existing public right-of-way of Sawmill Gulch Road as a county road within the meaning of Montana statutes. We filed the petition to give the county the legal authority it says it currently lacks to address very real and, in our view, significant public safety issues with this roadway, particularly in the winter months. And otherwise, to enable the county, in the words of the statute, "to maintain, control, and manage the road in the best interests of the road's many users." As the petition indicates, and as many of the folks in this room are undoubtedly aware, the portion of Sawmill Gulch Road we're concerned about is a narrow roadway that runs along and up Sawmill Gulch, along the north side of a very steep hillside. The road has minimal shoulders and deep ditches for most of its length from the main Rattlesnake Trailhead and the parking area there to its intersection with Russian Joe Road, which is a private road that extends or that is about a mile, approximately a mile, up Sawmill Gulch from the main trailhead. Ten families currently rely on Sawmill Gulch Road to reach their homes and large and, you know, honestly, ever-increasing numbers of recreational users and other members of the public use Sawmill Gulch Road every day and in every season. In winter months, essentially from early November through March or early April, the road is a dangerous, anxiety-producing nightmare. It's icy and slick and it remains so all winter long. Drivers regularly slide off the road and end up in the ditch, often blocking the road, sometimes for hours at a time. This can be a daily occurrence, as our neighbors can attest, during certain periods of the winter. The road is narrow to begin with and it only gets narrower as the winter proceeds and snow accumulates. Neither the county nor the Forest Service, which shares jurisdiction over Sawmill Gulch Road, plows or otherwise maintains the road. Frankly, this is something that baffles us, given the high volume of public and recreational traffic the road sees. As a result, a small group of homeowners who depend on the road to reach their homes must, by necessity, maintain the road year-round. I do some of the plowing, I will say, and I can say this from bitter experience, that after a while, there's nowhere to push the snow on, on the road. The road inevitably narrows as the winter proceeds to one lane and when two vehicles come upon one another going in opposite directions, someone's got to back up or someone's got to try to pull over and the result is often that someone ends up in the ditch, blocking the road. And the fork at Russian Joe Road, about a mile up the road from the beginning at the trailhead, where Sawmill Gulch goes on, Sawmill Gulch Road goes on to the upper trailhead at Sawmill Gulch, that road, that trailhead road is not plowed by anyone. So folks driving up there expecting to drive onto the trailhead and park there often can't go further. There's no warning, and that's a significant issue for us. There's no indication or warning to folks who are beginning the trip up the road that the road to the trailhead is impassable. So people are surprised to find that out and they end up then either parking at the fork, the junction with Russian Joe Road, or trying to turn around and getting stuck. But in each case, or either case, folks end up blocking passage up and down Russian Joe Road. The other issue frankly is that people regularly park in several shallow turnouts on the road which are intended to permit vehicles to pass one another as they come in opposite directions. When that happens, someone again has to back up or try to pull over and once again, someone often ends up in the ditch and blocking the road. These situations occur frequently, as I mentioned, sometimes on a daily basis throughout the winter. We believe that the county and the Forest Service are aware of these problems and the risks they pose to public safety. So far, these events have been frustrating, they've been annoying, they've been maddening sometimes. Frankly, they've been more so every time they happen. But to this point, no lives have been lost, no serious injuries, to my knowledge, have been sustained. But it's not hard at all to imagine how that changes, how a more consequential or even tragic outcome might occur if a medical or other emergency personnel were to be blocked or delayed in responding to a real emergency. So again, our purpose in the petition is that the county, we hope the county will take and have the authority it needs to impose and enforce reasonable parking, parking regulations, rules, restrictions, things of that sort, speed limits, and other appropriate safety measures for this road. Otherwise, frankly, to be able to take the actions that are necessary to maintain and manage this road in the best interests of all of its many users. What those specific actions should be, or might be, we can discuss certainly as part of this process and later. But we want, and our purpose is that the county have the authority it needs to take those necessary and appropriate actions to address, again, the very real problems we think are present. So that's all I would say. Thank you for giving us the opportunity here. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have. We also have a little PowerPoint presentation. I don't know if we've got the bugs worked out or not, but we're good.
Oh, I thought your presentation was in lieu of the PowerPoint presentation, no?
I'm sorry?
I thought you were being the applicant's representative, but you were just commenting as public comment. You still have a...
No, I am, I am a representative of the petitioners, yes.
Right, but there's a PowerPoint presentation to be presented now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, and could you please state your name for the record when you begin your presentation?
Let me pull up the PowerPoint here. This will take no more than an hour, I promise. Thanks for taking the time to meet with us. I've not had a chance, Josh, to sit and engage you with this issue and I'm sure Mr. Strohmeyer is tired of getting my emails. And I know John Hart is because he won't even talk to me anymore, so. This PowerPoint is just a slice of the issues that we deal with day in and day out. I purposely got myself last night, cutting it down from 140 photos to about 30. But I think it does give you a decent overview and give the public a decent overview of what we're dealing with. And I can address some of the other issues afterwards. My name is John Barrett. I live at 7221 Russian Joe Road and I'm one of the petitioners. I've been living up there not as long as Candace Fetcher, who's here, but coming upon 10 years now, or close to 10 years. And, you know, as I walk through the PowerPoint, I can talk a little bit about what's changed over the last few years. And I take it, is this appearing on? There we go. The overview of this for me is, these problems occur year-round. The problems seem to be more exaggerated in the wintertime, but the problems occur year-round. I have multiple stories of bikers coming down the road on a rainy day, almost running into traffic coming their way, including a doctor who broke half a dozen ribs, having to throw his bike in the ditch on a rainy day with traffic going up the road. Partly, I would contend, because there's not proper signage. This traffic on the road and the public use of it has increased dynamically year-over-year. As I said, there's not proper signage. A big concern for the residents and for the whole county ought to be fire danger. As more traffic starts using that area, which, there's nothing wrong with that, but without proper monitoring, without proper warnings, the fire danger increases dramatically. What happens typically, when you live up there, you hear this, is the road is supposed to be used, or that area is signed down below to be used from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There isn't a night in the summertime, a Friday or a Saturday night, that somebody isn't up there partying. And if I were in high school, it might have been me. We worry about fires. Oftentimes, I'll be the bad neighbor and run down my vehicle and shake a bunch of high school kids out of the trailhead where the gate is in the Upper Forest Service Road to tell them they can't be starting a fire there. And all you have to do is go up there and you'll see the fire pits from the nights before. There is no monitoring it, nobody's taking responsibility to do that. The Forest Service claims they don't have the people to do that or the budget to do that. And yet, the budget to pay for a fire might exceed monitoring that in the summertime. Speeding, there's a one speed sign down when you first leave Rattlesnake Drive and head up Sawmill Gulch Road, there's not another one anywhere on the road. Parking, there are a couple of no parking signs, I understood, were put up by the county. Was it the Forest Service? Okay, the Forest Service put them up, nobody pays attention to them. The county did put some signs up at the bottom of the road. And I got a video that you'll play that'll show you the path of the road and I challenge you to see the signs that were put up. It won't happen. The other concern that I think I share with all of our neighbors is the liability issues. Steve mentioned that sooner or later, somebody's going to get killed up there. And I don't think that's an exaggeration, but you could say that for every highway in Montana, frankly. This one might be preventable, so we ought to take a look at that. This is the road we're talking about. And I will, there's a video here, but I don't know if it's going to play. There it is. I'll let myself narrate it. This was taken about first snowstorm this year. That speed sign was the first one, an only one. Now, I don't know if you saw any signs there that the county put up. We passed them. I was driving the speed limit, by the way.
But were you using a mobile device while you were driving?
My daughter. I blame my daughter. No, this isn't a county road, I can't get ticketed. All right, enough of that. These are just some photos that show some of what happens as snow gets on that road and vehicles try to travel up and down it. And it is, this isn't a once-in-a-while occurrence. As I said, I cut this thing back from hundreds of photos we've accumulated over the years. What often happens is people will park off the side of the road and block the road. These are the turnouts right here and those turnouts are intended to be there, or the white spots are intended to be there, so if you have to back down the road, you can pull your car into them and people can pass. When people park in these spots, there is no place to get away from backing all the way down the road. And, you know, unless you know how to back, like my wife, you're in trouble. I'm in trouble.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
So in the last frame of the video, there was a sign on the fork headed towards the trailhead. What did that sign say?
No parking. There's another one on the left-hand side, and I know you guys hopefully will take a field trip. Dave, you've been up there, I trust, you have too, right?
I've been up there recreationally.
Yes. There are no parking signs up there. They're written in English, maybe that's our issue. Because the people who see them ignore them, completely ignore them. If I go through my photos, it's shocking to me how many people are blocking the road that are from out of state. At least a quarter of the photos I have, Washington, Idaho, Oregon, Canada. You know, maybe they're students at the university, but nevertheless, they're blocking the road and preventing us from going down. The stories get mind-numbing if I go on and on. My daughter broke her arm last winter on a Sunday. I was coming down Russian Joe Road to go get an x-ray to bone a joint and I'm coming down the road and there are two cars parked right at the bottom of the road. I have that photo in here. I couldn't get by them. Thankfully, one of our neighbors is Dr. Will Stein, who's an orthopedic surgeon of bone and joint. So I drove back up the hill to his house and, as doctors do, he said, "She'll be fine, come in tomorrow." And it was broken. But he, you know, forewarned us that if it were something major, it was a hairline fracture, if it were a major break, I would have been playing bumper cars with the two cars at the bottom of the road and I wouldn't have handled it very nicely. I'm trying to stay calm for John Hart here, just so he doesn't get mad. There are vehicles blocking the road and as neighbors, we try to be helpful, we really do. I've pulled out seven people in the last, or this year, and we haven't had much of a snow year so far. What happens is, this is the Forest Service trail off to the right and people will pull in there and it gets really slick and they cannot move. This car looks like it shouldn't be stuck, it couldn't move. It couldn't go left or right. I had to pull it out to get it to a point where it could turn around. And we do this all the time. Here's a wrecker pulling somebody out who's gone off the road. This is a typical situation. I can't tell you how often this happens. Just a couple of young kids, nice kids, went up there. I asked them why they were going up there, they were just going on a drive. There's no signs or posting or anything else like that. One of our neighbors, Michael Punk, sent me a photo one time of a sign that I don't think the county would put up, but it basically said, "If you're dumb enough to go up here with a vehicle that doesn't accommodate what you're going to have, you expect the results you're going to get." These guys were clueless. They got up, figured out that they couldn't go any farther because they were slipping, tried to turn around, ended up blocking this road for about an hour and a half. I called this young guy's father, he was in Oregon, and his dad said, "He's on his own. He's dumb enough to get stuck, he can get out." And he's probably right, he doesn't have to bail his college-age son out. This kid said, "I can't afford to haul a wrecker." Oftentimes on that road, because it's not a designated county road, if you have AAA or even some other wrecker services, they won't come up the road because it's not a county road, it's private property. They consider it private property. The issues get more and more complicated when that starts happening. Thankfully, the sheriffs, and I think TJ McDermott has been in a meeting or two with us and had discussions with us, I think he's sensitive to what's going on up there. But this is a very typical situation. Here's a vehicle blocking the road in one of the turnouts. This is an issue that happens frequently at night. It's a short little video, but these vehicles right here, this guy came up to pull his friend out. You can see the tow rope there. And there's a wrecker, because neither one of them could get out, but the wrecker can't get by the two cars that are stuck on the road. So the wrecker can't even go pull up the first car. This car ahead of him, the guy in the back was going to go try to pull him out, this guy just abandoned his car. He got stuck there and walked away. We had no idea where he was. I had come down the road to try to get out and you can see it's not wide enough to pass. So I turned around, backed down, to try to pull this guy out, but there was nobody with the car. He was gone. So as a resident up there, you are now pinned to your house. If there's an emergency, there's no way out. And this situation is just not acceptable. More vehicles in the wide spots right here, you can see there's two wide spots here. Both of the wide spots are filled. Another vehicle off the road.
Mr. Bennett, how would the county owning this road solve these problems?
Pardon?
How would the county, having a right-of-way in this road, solve these problems?
I think it's pretty simple. I have shared with Mr. Strohmeyer and you, Nicole, I think you were in the meeting. We had talked to the County Works Department, who said that they can't plow that road because they don't have a plow narrow enough to go up the road. So I drove out to the County Works Department. And I didn't want to put the photo in here, but I can, you've seen it, Dave. They have three trucks that can go up that road. If I were to design a truck to keep that road clear, they own them.
How is it in the public interest for us to take on a currently unmaintained road into our inventory? We have over 600 miles of road and we can't even maintain half of them. How would it be in the public's interest for us to take on this road, which would require a lot of maintenance and a lot of staff time without benefit to all of the taxpayers of Missoula County?
I respectfully disagree with you about the time element. You already plow to the trailhead parking lot. There's a slide in here from this morning, or yesterday morning, I think it was, that show the sand, where the sand drop ends at the trailhead parking lot. Instead of turning around in the trailhead parking lot, if the plow were to go one mile up the road, but even, let's even take a little easier path. If you go five-tenths of a mile up the road, there's a wide enough spot for the plow to turn around. Even the big plow trucks, if they went half a mile up the road, turned around and came back down, they would clear the bottom end of that road. More than 50% of the people that go off the road, go off the road in the bottom third of the road because the neighbors who go up above know how to drive on that road. So it would take, you'd have to talk to a driver, I think it would take an extra five minutes. And I would argue it would take no more time to drive up that road, turn around at the halfway point and drive back down, having plowed the road, than it would to go into the trailhead parking lot and turn around. And I will tell you, because this is a very sensitive issue for me, I have watched that truck, that plow truck, sit in that trailhead parking lot for 15 to 20 minutes after he's plowed, sitting there. Now, maybe that's what it takes to regenerate the energy to go back down and plow the rest of it, but...
We can check that, we have GPS units on all of our trucks. Even if we plow it, I guess I don't see the, we have county roads all the time that people are going off of and everything. I mean, this is, it's a private road. First of all, no one disagrees that the road is bad. There are some downsides to living on a private road in Montana in the winter. There are some downsides to living on a private road in Montana in the winter. And so I'll let you finish your presentation, if we could get through it quickly. But...
Let me bounce through the rest of it.
And then make John present a little bit about some of the history of this, just because it's very one-sided, and I don't disagree with you, and we don't need to see half an hour of presentations that this road is not great. But that's not what we're talking about today. We're talking about whether the county wants to take this into its inventory.
Well, let me point out a couple of other things. I did, because the question has come up in the past, because is there enough traffic up there to actually warrant the county taking care of it? And I think the difference is, I started by putting a game camera up there years ago to see the increase in traffic, and then monitoring it for 36 months. Because that issue's been going on much longer than that. The increase in traffic, and I've got the pictures I can show anybody, has enormously increased. The public in the summer and in the winter, because people want to recreate. It's a great thing. It's a good thing for the city of Missoula. The fire dangers from people going up there...
John, and I guess for anyone else who wants to speak, I think it's important to bifurcate the issue such that if you're making the case for why the county ought to take this into our road inventory, decoupling maintenance from other reasons why we might want to take this on is important, because I think we should go into this, everyone ought to go into this with their eyes wide open, that there might not be immediately any maintenance, winter or summer, or otherwise provided. So making sure that you're clear about the rationale for what benefits, basically what benefits would accrue by virtue of Missoula County taking this on regardless of the maintenance question. I think we get it that by making this a county road, that would enable us at some point in time, should we so desired, to assume maintenance responsibility. But by no means is it automatic. So I think a first step would be making the case very clear what benefits there would be to this being a county road apart from the maintenance question.
I think public safety is a huge one. I think, you know, let's say that the county decides that you don't want to plow and maintain the road, for the reasons you suggest, because of budgets and everything else. There needs to be increased signage. Right now, there isn't the ability for the county to tow cars that are blocking the road. It's not considered a county road. And we've gone round and round with the authorities up there, who say that they don't have the right to tow cars off of that road. As homeowners, we have a right to have access to our home. I don't think there's another county road in the, that you would have jurisdiction over that you would let people block access to people's homes. Something has to be resolved related to that. There's a liability issue. There's a liability issue that falls upon the residents if we take on the responsibility of plowing the road and somebody gets injured. I have plenty of attorneys I talk to and deal with every day. I've talked to my insurance companies that I work with. They can't provide us a liability policy, even through an umbrella policy, because we don't own the road. And I can't have, put ourselves at risk to go down and try to plow that road consistently. Because the first time somebody gets in a wreck and says whoever's plowing this is at fault, they'll point to us. That's not a fair solution. So, look, I don't have a simple answer. I think good, logical people can look at a situation like this, recognize it's an important resource for the county, to have people be able to recreate up the rattlesnake. But recreation and access doesn't mean convenience. You don't, people who want to drive, this last slide right here happened last fall, because there's nowhere to put the snow, that's what the public thinks of where the snow was put. Because they couldn't drive up the fork up there. Access and convenience are two different things. There's access from the trailhead parking lot. You have to hike a mile up a trail that's adjacent to this road. So maybe one of the solutions is to close it except for residents in the wintertime, and suggest that people walk from the trailhead parking lot. It's a public safety issue. It's a safety issue for the residents, but it's a safety issue for people who use that road. There's a great picture in the Missoulian, a day or two ago, with a fat tire biker going up the road and a vehicle off the road. It just happened, the Missoulian photographer showed up there. He could find that picture every single day, he or she. That wasn't a staged picture. It was just what happens. So, Nicole, while I appreciate what you're saying, if this road weren't used by the public, and they didn't use it to recreate, and it wasn't used by bikers, if you went up there last weekend, the trailhead parking lot was packed. There was nowhere to park, and there were cars on both sides of the road, all the way down and past the bridge, up over the edge. I love that people want to use that part of this. That's why we live in this town. But not at the expense of safety for everyone.
And I wasn't just, I wasn't disagreeing with you, I was just trying to point to, Dave made the point much better than I did, about decoupling the maintenance issues from the other issues, because they are very...
If you didn't plow anything up there, if you didn't plow to the trailhead, if you didn't plow any of the roads up in that area, might be another choice. There was also discussion about swapping some plowing with the city, and that's been discussed. So, again, I urge that smart people who can take a look at a problem like this, get together and then figure out a solution.
Could I make just a very quick point? I think it's important, I take the point, Dave, about decoupling the commitment to maintain the road. But I think the step one here is what we've asked you to do today is to establish this piece of road as a qualifying statutory county road, that would give the county the authority it needs to take appropriate steps, whatever those steps turn out to be, to manage this road in a way that maintains safety, it enhances safety, and otherwise assures as best we can, and recognizing their limits, that this road is available, it's safe to use for the great volume of public use it receives. And, you know, we would like the county to maintain the road, frankly. But I understand what is said about that. But what I think we can do, what we'd urge you to help us do, is establish parking regulations and restrictions on the road. I think it would be a great help if there were no, if it was clear, there were signs posted that said there's no parking on the road anywhere its length, particularly during the winter. If there were signs that said at the beginning of the road, the fork to the upper trailhead may well be impassable, so be aware when you head to it that you may not be able to make it. Okay? Frankly, one of the things we've talked about is temporary signs, sign boards, things of that nature that could be deployed, either by residents or by county officials, that would be tailored to the situation. If the road is particularly narrow and slippery, a sign that tells people that. If the fork to the upper trailhead is impassable, a sign that tells people that. Okay? What we want to have you do now is establish this road as a county road under the statute that would enable you, and with public input, then take appropriate steps to manage the road in a way that, as we've said, enhances public safety, otherwise lets people know what's going on. It's not gonna be a silver bullet, but I think it would be helpful.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and I guess I was just surprised by the presentation being about maintenance, because when we have talked about this previously, and this conversation's been going on for years, it has been about signage and different things that the county can't currently do, but we could do if it was a county road. Maintenance had not been brought into the question that I had heard until now, so I'm glad that we're separating those. And then I also would just make sure that we manage expectations. Every time we have put up no parking zones to try to do things, the results have been very disappointing. People don't heed signs very well. And you're right, then we would have the authority to tow them and ticket them, keeping in mind the number of patrol officers we have, and especially on winter roads, we have a ton of wrecks, our patrol cars are running to and from and everything, and enforcing parking regulations is not always at the top of the list for our patrol deputies. So absolutely, I'm, we are happy to try to do, you know, if we accept this road, we'll be happy to try to work on solutions, but I think we all need to manage our expectations about there is no silver bullet, and the solutions are probably not going to solve all of these problems, and this road is still going to be a problem. With that, I suppose, do the commissioners have any comments to the presenters before I open up public comment, or questions for John, or does John have a comment?
I was just gonna suggest that the Missoulian might have just found its front-page photo right here before us, so... No, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Does this photo become public now that I put it here? I think my only comment is that, while, Nicole, I appreciate that you want to separate maintenance from just signage and stuff like that, I think the two do go somewhat hand in hand. Because people do ignore signs. There's a sign at the bottom of the road right now. A yellow sign on a tree that, if you look for it, seems pretty obvious. If you don't look for it, it's easy to go past it. And I think I would invite the commissioners to take a trip up that road and see what it looks like, and see the issues that we deal with. And in particular, maybe do it on a weekend after it snows, and then you'll really see what we deal with, day in and day out. Thanks.
I guess at this point I would open up public comment, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Candace Fletcher, and I'm a member of the public and also signed the petition. I've lived up there longer than anyone currently. I was, I've lived up there for 23 years, and the reason I wanted to speak is to put a little, give a little historical context. I haven't done a study, the way John has with his game camera, and he only did it over three or four years, but I can tell you, we didn't used to have these kinds of problems. The difficulty is that the public usage has increased exponentially, and it's not that we want to keep the public out. It's exciting to see all of those people. But there are times when they need to be told it's too dangerous. And I can tell you, over the years, I've given people rides down when they're stuck. I gave a woman, a totally hysterically crying woman and her baby, a ride down late one night. This is probably six years, six or seven years ago. And what we hear time and time and time again from members of the public who are stuck there, and who have to spend money they don't have, and who are frightened and inconvenienced and so forth, is if I had only known how bad it was, I never would have tried to come up this road. I was just out for a drive. And so the signage issue is a major public safety issue. And I just wanted to speak, more than anything, to that growth. And Judy Malloy has experienced that, and I know that Peter Stark, who has owned property up there longer than I have, has also seen the huge increase in public usage. So I just wanted to add those two items in less than three minutes.
Candace, before you totally sit down there, so is it, just to be clear in terms of the folks who are creating the traffic hazards during the winter by going off the road or blocking the road, is it strictly non-resident, folks who do not reside up there who are creating the problems, or do residents also find themselves sliding off, blocking the road?
The, well, I would say that every one of us who lives up there, except maybe Lynn Willstein, has been off the road at one time, but we have learned how to drive that road, and we all have four-wheel drive and studded tires. So we have taken all the precautions we possibly can. When we get in trouble, it's because a non-resident won't move over, won't back up, and so we have to try to do it. And I'm, I wish I were as talented as John's wife Sue is in backing up, but when I, I've only been stuck once, and that was because I tried to back up in the dark, in the wintertime, in the wintertime, and the other, the oncoming car thought I should just move over, and I knew that if I moved over, I would drop a wheel and go in the ditch. So it's mostly the people who haven't been up the road much before who end up blocking the road. And it's often people that don't have proper, don't have all-wheel drive, don't have proper winter tires that do it.
Thank you.
I guess this would be for you guys or for John. There's mention of a city-county trade in doing some maintenance. First I'd heard of it, can you explain what this would be and how potential, how much potential is there there?
Well, and I don't know how much we want to get into the weeds of the maintenance issue. I mean, the shorthand version would be if at some point in time it ever made sense for the city to assume maintenance of all county roads in the upper rattlesnake, in exchange for us taking over maintenance responsibility somewhere else in the city. I mean, it would be a question of, does that make sense? Is everyone getting equal treatment, if you will, and not getting a lower quality of maintenance than what they currently have, either on the city or the county side? But I think that conversation, while probably worth having, is maybe a step or two down the road from where we are right now.
Okay, other public comment? If you can remember to state your name for the record.
I'm Bert Lundler, and I just want to start by saying that I've spent a fair amount of time in Sawmill Gulch in the last dozen years, volunteering to remove weeds and unneeded barbed wire from public lands and adjoining private lands owned by the National Wildlife Federation that serve as winter range for the North Hills Ebro elk herd. I'm extremely sympathetic to the problem the 10 residents have expressed, and it's not just their problem, it's a problem of everyone using Sawmill. I know that there are at least two parties who aren't here to discuss this problem, one party being the recreational users, which are vast, I can assure you, and have increased during the dozen years that I've been volunteering there. But also the Forest Service, which is shut down today, but which has a key role to play in any discussions about recreational use, gating roads. I might say that it sounds to me like this road begs for a gate at the bottom. A gate that can be locked, a gate that can be opened by the residents. And they can go up ahead at their own risk, and everybody else knows that they're not going. And before you preclude that possibility, I would certainly encourage you to discuss this problem with the Forest Service, and figure out, and the residents, and to some degree with the recreational users, who are much harder to get in the room. But it sounds to me like one option that I would want to consider would be, does a gate belong down there? I mean, a sign does not serve the same purpose a gate does. And I would like that possibility to be considered, among many others. My goal would be to maintain as much recreational access... My goal would be to maintain as much recreational access as possible in Sawmill. That does not have to require driving to that trailhead in winter, does not have to require driving to that trailhead after 10:00 at night. So if that gate were locked at 10:00 at night, it would be okay by me, maybe not okay with some other users of that land. So anyway, some possibilities I hope can be considered.
And thanks, Bert. I guess in the spirit of tempering expectations, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hart, but counties are precluded by statute from blocking a county road, so maybe if this was a Forest Service road, they would have some discretion, but our reading of Montana Code annotated as informed by other situations that we've encountered in Missoula County is such that even if we wanted to, at this point in time, state law would not allow us to gate a road. Is that accurate, Mr. Hart?
Could you address the chair, please?
Yeah, I'm Peter Stark, and my wife Amy Ragsdale, I think back there, have owned land up there, I think, for 30 years, and I do appreciate you all listening to this discussion, and also I did want to welcome Commissioner Josh to the stand up there. So having been very much involved with this in 30 years, not as a resident, but actually as more as a recreational user and a landowner up there, that there's been, there has been this tremendous increase in use, and that I think that, I think we can all agree that this area is an enormous asset for Missoula and Missoula County, and, you know, for the Forest, for the Forest Service, for the citizens of the United States, and that in terms of wildlife, in terms of aesthetics, in terms of recreation, and it's becoming more valuable all the time. And from the very beginning, it's been my and Amy's philosophy to try to keep it as open as possible, and we've advocated that from the very beginning. And we've also tried to preserve it the best we can, to conserve it. We put our land in conservation easement, which is all the left side of Sawmill Gulch, now owned by the Grinnell family, part of it, and part by us. And likewise, when the Feshers moved up, they put a huge amount of land in conservation easement. So there's been a lot of very thoughtful work and consideration done to this by private owners, and by the public, and by recreation users to this asset, and how do we enhance it? How do we keep it? How do we make it, continue to make it the wonderful asset it is, without this sort of nastiness that can occur with these choked roads? And it is a tremendous problem up there, the winter driving, you know, there's no way around it. I just philosophically like to think of this as a public-private partnership, and what can be done best with the public and the private working together to make this happen. And I think the county does have an obligation, this is a tremendous asset to the county, it's a tremendous asset, there's a tax base up there. We all know that this is one of the things that Missoula touts as one of the great desirable things about living in Missoula County, is this very recreational spot. So I do hope that the county will give this some serious consideration. So thanks.
Other public comment?
I'm gonna start my comments off with a question. The town and homeowners that live up there, are they living in an approved subdivision that was approved by Missoula County? Okay, if they are, then it seems to me that Missoula County should be responsible for the access to get to that subdivision. On the other hand, this seems to me, this is an issue with the Forest Service, not Missoula County. I think what the homeowners need to do is they need to apply to the Forest Service for a public road access special use permit. What that does is it gives them the opportunity to do the maintenance on the road. If you plow on the road right now without any kind of permit from the Forest Service, you are in violation of federal law. And you're right when you say if somebody slides off and sues, you guys' asses hung out to dry. So is the Forest Service. So that's what I would suggest, and that way, if you get a public access road permit, that would allow you-
Can you speak into the mic so that we can get it on the recording?
I'm sorry, Cola. That would allow you guys, the homeowners association, to gate the bottom, gate the road at the bottom, in accordance with your permit, but the Forest Service would still have to go through a bunch of public scoping, and because that road right now is technically open to the public year-round, and what it would need to be done is closed during the winter, it doesn't need to be closed all winter, if you don't have any snow, there's no reason to close the road. And that way, if you guys want to put signage up, you could have that included in your permit. Part of your permit would be a maintenance agreement in the permit. You could put signs in there, you can put, you could even go to the extreme, if you want to add more turnouts, you can request that from the Forest Service. The Forest Service by statute cannot allocate money for road improvements for public access to private property. They can only probably use appropriated funds for roads that are used to manage national forests, and they are using that road for national forests. And you hit the nail on the head here, it's not the residential use that's causing the problems up there, it's recreational use that's all of this use. So as a county, if you're considering taking over the jurisdiction of this road from the Forest Service, I think you're in for the long haul. You just can't say we're gonna maintain the parking, or we're gonna, we've established parking here and there. If you're gonna take over jurisdiction, you're probably gonna be responsible for the plowing and all that. So I would take that into consideration before the county assumes the responsibility at this point in time. If the county did not take it at the beginning, or like they should have, then now it's kind of a moot point, I think.
So just to clarify, subdivisions can be approved with private roads proposed by developers, so just because there's a subdivision doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be accessed by a county road, it can be proposed with private roads. And also, we do not have to maintain county roads. As I said before, we have over 600 miles of roads, it is at our discretion to maintain any county road. So just because something is a county road, it does not need to be maintained by the county, there is nothing in statute that requires the county to maintain county roads. We like to do it, and of course, you know, obviously, this has great public access to a public asset and everything, so I'm not saying we wouldn't, but I just wanted to be clear that the county is not required to maintain its roads. And we also aren't required to provide county roads to a subdivision, they can be private roads.
And the Forest Service is required to maintain their roads either, but that's kind of where we're at in the situation here, but I appreciate the time.
Might I suggest Steve Nyde give a little history of what's going on here?
Would you like to provide a little history, Steve Nyde, or not?
I know he'd rather not. Look, I think this might even predate John, this is John Barrett again. I have forensically looked at every piece of paper, paid out of my own pocket attorney's fees with the help of Candace and our neighbors, to study what was the potential of doing something with this road, the gate issue we visited before. And we actually had a meeting with the Forest Service, not the current head of the Forest Service, who suggested we put a gate in, but said they didn't have the funds to pay for it. I said I would pay for it. The neighbors, to their credit, and listen, there's a good group of neighbors up there, they feel much like Peter Stark. While we could go to the Forest Service and potentially put a gate up there, and the Forest Services said they would be in support of that, we don't think that's the right thing to do for the county. We think people who use that road to recreate would have issues. There's a long history that Steve Nyde could share, I think, a little bit of where the Forest Service and the Missoula County come into this, because right now, we've approached the Forest Service about taking care of the road, and the Forest Service says they don't have plow trucks, and they don't have the equipment to take care of it, even though right now, the roads should be their responsibility. And I think the county might think that, too, but Steve?
Steve Nyde, Surveyor's Office for the county. Josh, welcome. The historical aspect that I can provide, I developed just looking to see whether or not this road was public. It's my opinion that it is public. In fact, I believe it's county, I think county has maintained it in the past, and I think that that qualifies it as a prescriptive county, and for sure, a prescriptive public right-of-way. I think the idea of putting a gate down at the bottom, although it may solve some problems, I think there would be public outcry, significant public outcry about a gate there, and I think that we could be held to task that it is a county road, and that we would not be allowed to leave a gate down there, so I don't really think that is a good option. You know, I've beat this round in my head, too, I don't have a good solution, I don't know that there is a good solution. Having been up there a lot, both for the job and recreationally, one thing that could be done to minimally improve the situation, blind corners were mentioned, I think removal of some vegetation along both sides would help that a little bit, might help a little bit with the sun penetration down to the road's surface. I know there's really no room to widen the road, given the stream and the hill, without a huge expense, and I don't think the residents would like that, and it would just be way too costly. Historically, this road was used by the citizens of Missoula to gather wood for their livelihood, basically, wood for building, wood for cooking, and that's, I guess, goes to my contention that this is a public right-of-way. That road was not just used for recreational purposes, it was used to live. Past deputy county attorneys have opined that the road, in fact, is public beyond that gate at the turnaround. I don't particularly agree with that assertion, but I do believe that it is public, at least to that current gate. I haven't provided any solutions, I'm sorry. You know, as a recreationalist, I will say that I have been up there in the wintertime, but I'm probably the outlier in that when winter comes, I have a come-along, I have chains for the vehicle, I have tow chains, I have good tires and four-wheel drive. I'm, you know, it's gonna take a lot to get me stuck, but there's the Honda Civic with the two little 20-year-olds, and bald tires, and no amount of signage is gonna stop them from driving up that road and being stupid. I think that we can put some better signage out there, if it is created as a public right-of-way, county right-of-way, we can do a better job of signage, and maybe do some trimming of the foliage along there, but those are minimal, minimal improvements. So I guess, you know, I'm here to answer any questions, I'm here to go along on the road viewing with whoever is assigned to do that, and we'll schedule that through your schedule. I would assume it may be Josh's turn, since he's new.
Thanks a lot for that, and I'd love to go on the trip, I think we all want to go.
You're welcome.
But I'm not driving. How far is it from the fork up to the neighbors to the Sawmill Gulch trailhead?
About a mile.
Nine tenths.
Nine tenths from the trailhead to the fork.
So we're looking at, I can-
The trailhead parking lot.
That's what I'm talking about. At Sawmill Gulch, not-
The Rattlesnake Trailhead parking lot.
Could you speak into a microphone so we can get this on the record, please?
From the Rattlesnake Trailhead parking lot, where the section of dirt road, which is how long, Candace? The dirt section? 150 feet dirt section, and then it turns into pavement again. It's nine tenths of a mile up to where it forks to the left is Sawmill Gulch Road, which is paved to the right is the Forest Service access. So nine tenths of a mile. A Russian Joe Road is where, at the junction of Russian Joe and Sawmill Gulch.
And if you go down the Forest Service road, you get to another trailhead, right?
You get to a gate.
A gate, okay.
It's a quarter mile.
And that's where people are attempting to get to?
No, they're attempting to get there in the wintertime, they want to go up and sled in that valley, and hike, and do things like that, cross-country ski, but when they can't drive up that fork, they park their cars there, or they park in the turnouts, and then they hike up there. And, you know, it's my contention that access doesn't mean convenience. There's a parking lot at the bottom of the road, you have to hike a mile to get up there.
And beyond that gate, is there a little parking area there in the summertime that people use to-
In front of the gate.
In front of the gate, to go up that Sawmill Gulch trail?
Eight cars can fit there.
Eight cars?
Eight cars. Oftentimes, they'll be full with eight cars who are mountain bikers, who'll go there. That also happens to be where Friday and Saturday night in the summer, if you want to attend a party, you can park there after 10:00 PM, so.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Steve, question for you. So to speak to a point that Mr. Slater made, does the Forest Service even have any jurisdiction to issue a special use permit on this road?
Well, their ownership goes to the center of the road, I believe, so the underlying land is owned in fee by them. I believe the road's surface is public. You'd have to ask them, or John, I put John on the spot here.
In my meetings with the Forest Service, that is a special use permit, it's not something that they've volunteered if that is an option, and I don't know that it is an option, probably because of something that Steve Nyde just said, is that they only have property ownership from the center line of the existing road to the north, yeah, to the north.
Okay, thanks.
One other thing that I, it's unfortunate that nobody from the Forest Service could be here today, and that is because of the government shutdown. They, being representatives of the Forest Service, did very much want to be at this meeting today, but they just cannot legally be here in their representative capacity, and that's unfortunate. But one thing that I believe that I have heard from them over the course of the last year is that they're not interested in a gate at the bottom of the road, and that it's not, and that that was something that they were at least concerned about would result from the county designating this as a county road, that then the county would put up a gate, and that was, as I understood it, something that would not be acceptable to the current local Forest Service leadership.
Thanks. Was there any other questions for Steve or John?
Who might be able to answer this? Do we have a sense of how much it would cost to plow that nine tenths of the road? Nine tenths of a mile?
I don't. The question was just going through my head. If part of the problem for the residents up there is what you're seeing right there, would they be willing to plow that last quarter of a mile to the turnaround, thus alleviating just that particular issue?
Yeah, and I think, I wish Public Works was here, because that's where we've gotten a lot of our information about, it's not about necessarily the cost, a lot of it is about the design of the road and things like that, as far as not being what a county road standards would, you know, not meeting what standards we would want in a county road, and so taking on a road that we consider substandard, and what goes along with that, and what that means for our maintenance schedules, and I can't talk eloquently to you about it, maybe you can- Maybe you can iterate some of Public Works's concerns historically with taking on this road as a county road? You don't want to? Okay.
I know that it would be really difficult for them to turn their plow equipment around with what's existing there now. There would have to be some clearage and some flattening of the slopes.
All right. Doesn't sound like there's more, or do you have more questions for him? Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, so our next step is to, because we're going to leave this open and do a site visit, and then we'll come back to another public meeting. It sounds like all of us might be interested. We generally take turns on these, going on site visits, but it sounds like this might be one that we're all interested in going on. So Steve, do you want to work with Sarah to find a time that we could all go on a site visit?
Yes.
Thanks. And if there...
And depending on the road conditions...
Right. I'm not sure I want to go.
We may be walking part of it, so...
Right. And John, do you want to come?
I do want to come, and I have the contact information for the Forest Service representatives who want to come also. And I'm sure that the petitioners want to be involved in that.
Yeah. And do we have a contact list for the petitioners, like an email list, or how would we?
Yes.
Okay, so we can contact you when this gets set up. We do really want the Forest Service to be participating in this site visit, and so it might be slightly delayed, depending on how that looks, because we do think it's important to have them on the site visit and have their input before we would make any decisions. So...
So would it make any sense to schedule our subsequent public meeting ways out, allowing enough time for hopefully the federal government to open again and get a site visit, just to get something on the calendar? And I don't know how soon we think that would be reasonable to do, sometime in February or March, I don't know.
Probably prudent.
February 7, or 14, or 28 are all open.
I think we should go later. Oh, that's right, there's the 28th, is there going to be a meeting? That's not on our list. Oh, yes, it is. Maybe we should schedule it for February 28th, public meeting? Okay, and hopefully by that time, the government will be up and running, and they will be able to have input on this process and be on the site visit with us. So, all right, and we'll be in contact with everyone on the contact list who may want to join us on that site visit.
Do I understand, though, that the viewing, the road viewing, will take place in the meantime, you know, in between the...
Yes, but we will be contacting you and letting you know when that will happen. Because again, we need to wait for the Forest Service to be able to attend that. Yes. So we'll have the viewing sometime before the 28th, hopefully. If we can't, we'll continue it again on the 28th. But as of now, I will continue this hearing until February 28th. Is there any other business to come before the commission? With that, we will adjourn. Thanks.